Das, here. Ken Killian.
Here.
Michael DeLecky.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
John Miller.
Here.
Stephen Becker.
Here.
All accounted for.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing regarding Resolution 12-10 to discontinue a portion of Bonson Street, specifically the eastern seven feet of Bonson Street located adjacent to Lot 6, Block 30 of the original plot of the city of Platteville, specifically the Pine Street parking lot development. We go through this in a public hearing order, beginning with staff presentation, public statements in favor, against, and in general, then council discussion, closing the public hearing, and then action. When we call on people to speak who have indicated desire to do so, I'll read off three or four of you at a time, and if you would please proceed behind where the staff sits so that people may proceed to the microphone in an orderly fashion and we can get people up there so that they can be heard. We'll begin with staff presentation.
Okay, as part of that proposed redevelopment of the Pine Street parking lot, there's a request to discontinue a portion of Bonson Street. Basically, it's a request to narrow it. The right-of-way would be narrower than it currently is. We're looking at the stretch of Bonson Street between Pine Street and the alley that's located between Pine and Main Street. As mentioned, that would be a request to narrow the right-of-way by seven feet along the eastern side of that. That would result in the street itself being narrower than it currently is, but it would still be open for traffic as it is now. Since it is narrower, or it will be narrower, there's assumption that the four parking spaces on the west side of Bonson Street within that stretch would have to be eliminated. There may be a provision made for a loading zone of some sort for the post office, but otherwise those parking spaces would probably have to be removed. So we should go under that assumption when you're making your decision, but otherwise the traffic itself could continue. The proposal from the developer that goes with that would still maintain a sidewalk on that side of the street, so there'll still be a sidewalk on both sides of the street. So the net result is basically that the street itself will be narrower if this is approved. The Plan Commission has reviewed this request at their March meeting. They did recommend approval of the discontinuance request. Staff also recommends approval of the resolution to discontinue the street as included in your packet. Are there any questions?
Questions? Okay. Thank you. Again, we'll call people off as they have indicated the desire to speak. I would ask that you limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Please, if you may, try to avoid repeating previous commentary, and as you speak, please address the council. We'll begin with Glenn Barr, followed by Tom Morrissey, followed by Jane Stark, followed by Lori Barr. So if you would please proceed back behind the staff, then we could go there.
I mention that.
You're first, Glenn. We have Lori Barr also on the list, so Lori, if you would proceed back.
My name is Glenn Barr. I'm the co-owner of Urschens Florist with my wife Lori.
Excuse me, Mr. Barr. If you would turn that podium and face the council, you're addressing the council at the public hearing.
Thank you.
Not the audience. Thank you very much.
I hate being the icebreaker. We are focused tonight on whether the closing of part of South Bonson Street is for a good -- or is for the good of downtown or not. I'm here to say, this is not good for downtown. It will further restrict downtown traffic flow and remove four more parking places when we need the number to vastly increase. I need you to try and understand just how much downtown businesses struggle to stay alive. Everything from trying to pay decent wages to employees, keeping up with rising property taxes, and rising vendor costs is overwhelming enough, but now you want to take away the flow of downtown's lifeblood, its customers, both by restricting the flow of traffic even further and reducing customer parking. What we should be doing is developing this downtown area in a way that makes it easier for the flow of customers to drive, park, and shop downtown, not restricting it, and passing off the problems as something that can be resolved later. That's what's been happening for the last 35 years, and it has to stop. Make the decision to solve the parking problem in a downtown-friendly way. Turn the South -- turn the Bonson Street parking lot into a two-level parking structure without closing streets, without outside business dictating who gets to park and who will suffer. Our historic downtown consists of buildings that were built long before we had any choice in the matter. We are locked in. To make do with the parking our city planners in their wisdom hopefully realize is necessary if they want a vital downtown, beautiful and busy with customers that have found parking easy. If you want a thriving downtown business district, then follow through with the city plan from 1977. That's 35 years ago they deemed it necessary to build a parking ramp. For 35 years, we have known what kind of support the lifeblood of the downtown needed. Our customers, our employees, and our tenants all need parking, and for 35 years, the city has put it off. I say it's time to stop putting it off. It's time to stop putting other projects on the fast track that only make the parking situation worse and decide to stop the closing of Bonson Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Spenceley, excuse me. Tom Morrissey's next.
My name's Tom Morrissey. I'm co-owner of Morrissey Printing. First question I have is, why do they think they need to have seven feet of Bonson Street? Have we had an explanation for that? We're not answering questions, but that's a question that I have. Second of all, I could stay up here and go on and on and tell you reasons why I don't feel that that parking lot development, you know, the reasons it's not to be done, to disrupt our downtown, when I think that the only thing I've heard that we're going to gain from that is tax revenue. Could that be done at a different location? Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Stark, followed by Lori Barr, followed by Dave Spenceley.
Hi, my name's Jane Stark, and I have a beauty shop on South Court Street. And right now, we have a lot of problems with parking. I do a lot of senior citizens, so they cannot schedule their appointments at certain times of the day because it's too busy and they can't, you know, walk that far. So, and right now, we have 10 businesses on South Court Street, and we're open sometimes in the evenings, and it is, the parking's horrible because we have Steve's Pizza behind us and we have the ticket alongside of us. So I think that we have a lot of apartments already downtown here, and I just feel that we don't need any more apartments downtown. We need businesses and we need parking. And so I hope you consider that. And also, let's see, I was wondering about if they do go ahead and do the parking in the facility they're doing, who's going to enforce that? If you buy a parking lease and you go and there's no parking there that day, if somebody's in your spot, who do we call or that type of thing? Also, I was wondering about the water and sewer on Pine Street. Is that going to be adequate for all the usage and whatnot? Have we replaced all the pipes in that area? Is that going to cost the city more money? So, okay, thank you.
Lori Barr, followed by Dave Spenceley, followed by Tom Cradwell.
I'm Urschens Florist, and I'm the wife of Glenn here. And my flower shop has been on Main Street for 28 years, and I love my job. I am focusing on the Platteville 2010 Downtown Revitalization Plan. In it, it states that interviews were made early 2010 by the MSA Professional Services. These people were hired for over $20,000 to come up with this plan, and in the plan, it says involving the people who are directly affected by a downtown plan is an important step. People who work, live, shop, and play in that area have important insights about how the downtown functions and what should be considered for change. Very important comment. Downtown is one of the most, this is another comment in the pamphlet, downtown is one of the most important visitor attractions in Platteville, and I agree. I have a lot of visitors that stop in my shop. On January 11th, 2011, a downtown revitalization plan was adopted by our city council. This plan is a guide to help city officials and economic development professionals attract and direct investment in downtown Platteville in ways that support the long-term supply or viability and sustainability of our downtown economy. Also in this brochure or pamphlet, in our plan, is a core objective. One of the most important things that we need to realize as a whole community, and we downtown businesses do realize that adequate parking supply for downtown residents, customers, employees is extremely important. It also states that the city's best immediate opportunity to build a parking lot is at the location that we are discussing, 75 South Bonson Street, and it stresses immediate in there. It also projects a target date of completion of a downtown parking structure to be built at that location by December 2013. Now, two blocks down is another redevelopment site that they highlighted in this, and it is Pioneer Ford. Pioneer Ford is for sale, and it is an extremely, looked at as an extremely prime property for a multi-use development. In the pamphlet, it lists that three-to-five-story development with underground parking would be ideal for this land. Now Pioneer Ford owners are working on vacating their building soon with an anticipated move on Highway 151. I look at this as a great opportunity for our city to look at the possibility of the developers to develop this land. I propose that vacating a portion of Bonson Street for the project, for the project to be postponed action, and I'm asking our council to please consider a comment, I'm sorry, I'm not used to this, my zone, but I have to say this. I'm asking our council to please consider a public comment, comment project to be initiated by our downtown businesses and myself. I would be honored, and it would be volunteer. I have major, a major holiday weekend coming up, May 12th, involving major holiday, major traffic in my shop, and it is on May 12th, Mother's Day weekend. We also have UW Platteville graduation that weekend. The following weekend is May 19th, and I am on the committee for the Alice in Dairyland finals. I am so excited about what's happening in Platteville. I love Platteville, and I would recommend a chance for our community's voice to be heard through this comment project that I am willing to do for our people in Platteville. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Dave Spenceley.
Hello. I'm Dave Spenceley. My wife and I, Margie, own the bridal boutique building and business on Main Street. Margie's been there for 32 years. We've owned the business for 27. We're concerned about plugging up more of downtown parking with this apartment building we're talking about. I was at the workshop last week that you people offered and listened, and you were very excited about the jobs also that came about at that meeting with the new cheese factory, and aren't we all? But I have a concern that by plugging up this downtown parking, that we're going to eliminate some jobs on Main Street because there's going to be some businesses that don't survive. Jobs are what we're talking about in this economy right now, every day. That's what you turn on the TV, you're going to hear about it. And those students are fine, and we will find a home for them in town, but not in the middle of the business district. We have a downtown Main Street committee that's been working hard for years. We have a downtown TIF so we can fix up our buildings and make them appealing for people to come. We have a very strong chamber of commerce. We have everything going for us in business, and we don't need this bottleneck that we're proposing here. The price of the lot has me a little concerned in how it was put on the market. $261,000, I don't know where the figure came from. It didn't get offered publicly. I know there's people that have been paying taxes in this town for 40 years that may have been interested, knowing if it was for sale. If you were to sell it, I would think you should do it at sealed bids, public auction, not just take, you know, just go ahead and sell it for $261,000 and then give them such money back that they're getting $600,000 back to help them build this building? You know, between the lot and the TIF and the $600,000, that's 20% of the money they're getting back in charity from the city of Platteville, and you people are concerned about putting $261,000 in your general budget. That's a drop in the bucket for what we're looking at in the next few years. $261,000 doesn't plug any holes. I agree with Lori on the Pioneer Ford land. I think it's very appealing probably to something like this. If something, if housing doesn't go there, you know, I'm not sure what type of business can go there and take it over. My strongest opinion of this right now is that you should do nothing, that you should table it, long-term. Get some people to do some more, you know, realizing what might happen here. Look at a parking ramp. I think that's still a great idea, three or four stories on the parking ramp. You've got a lot of college kids, you've got more coming to town. See if someone's interested in building it. That way, if it's publicly, if it's privately done, they'll have to police it, they can hire you. Having the stalls available to us or someone else, who's going to police it, whatever with this, with this proposal we have on the table now? There's a lot of gray area there. The city seems excited about the $100,000 in property taxes that'll get off that lot, aren't we all? But you know, they can get that same $100,000 off the Pioneer lots if we get, you know, if we put it wherever. Back to what I think, I think we should just put it on hold for a while, see, make sure the students come. We've put over 700 beds in this town this year. I think we should make sure those beds are full. And I have one final statement that I don't want you to feel is too strong, I just want to make sure that I get this point out. I have a statement to the city council and the city manager. When it's all said and done, you people should stop worrying so much about the UWP and where them students are going to sleep, and start worrying more about, you know, us people here that are in business trying to succeed. You people are working for the city of Platteville and the people of Platteville, and the UWP will, someone will come in and build a bed for the UWP, like on the Washington Street apartments. I think that's a great idea. Tear down four or six of those homes, put it, put the apartment right in the area where it belongs. It's beautiful. And just please have some respect for our retail business. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Cradwell.
I'm Tom Cradwell. I own a building at 65 West Main Street, and I'm here because I am opposing the closing of Bonson Street. The word "closing" is kind of an ambiguous word. The real meaning of that word "closing" is really giving the land away free to the owner that's adjacent to the street. What's important about giving this space, this section away, is that we are giving away four parking spots, and those four parking spots are worth $15,000 each, or a total of $60,000 bucks. Where did I get that number? I got that from Council DeLecky. It is, let me see, in the community corner of the Platteville Journal. Couple weeks ago, he wrote that the cost of a parking spot or a parking ramp would be $15,000 per parking spot. Okay, gotta slow down here. Okay. Anyway, we have 51 stalls in our lot now, on a parking lot, plus the four in Bonson Street. That's a total of 55 parking spots, and 55 times 15,000 would come out to 825,000 value, and that may not be market value exactly, but it's a use value of that property. That's what those cars, when people come in and park a car, the cars don't care if it's a parking lot or a parking, parking lot or a parking ramp, it's worth $15,000. And I checked those numbers with the, with the MSA revitalization plan from 2010, and it was like about a 4.3 million project, and I took the calc, calculated it out, and it came out to about $15,000 per parking spot. So that's basically what we're giving away. Okay. The other thing that I picked up in the meeting the other night, if I understand right, is that the, there's supposed to be some private parking on the first level of the parking, parking lot, but as far as I know, the city would have no control of this, of this spot, and so the developer would actually control this, and if I understand, that the price that he would charge is what the market would bear. So eventually, over the years, if we don't have any control of that parking inside, the developer can start raising the rates, and pretty soon the senior citizens will have to drop out, and then other people drop out, and pretty soon those parking spots on that first level will go to his rental, because 1.3 cars will not be, parking spots will not cover the need for that particular 110-bed unit that he's planning and putting up. Let me see, on the outside, we get six stalls that the city would be responsible for or own. So we're giving away $400,000 for parking improvement, but we only get six stalls that we control on the outside. Excuse me there. Okay, then, in the other process, we're giving the developer $600,000 upfront. We're giving him $825,000 in value on those lots. So by my calculations, we're up to about 14, 1.4 million, and then we get another $200,000 of a loan incentive. So pretty soon, we're up to 1.6 million. So if we're going to go back and collect the tax money at $100,000 bucks a year, but give him $20,000 back to pay back part of that loan, we're only collecting 80. We're looking at 16 to 20 years before we can break even on that location. 16 to 20 years, that's no getting. So we're not bringing any money in, we're just kind of like moving numbers around and congesting Main Street. Let me see, then, okay, I, you know, personally, I don't feel the developer is entitled to this gift, and if the developer wants to develop properties, he could go down to Pioneer Ford, that's available. He can go down to Highway, Business Highway 151, right across from Culvers. There's a beautiful place to build a apartment building, and that would be out of our way for sure. And if he wants to go a little bit further, he could go out on industrial, a little bit further out on Highway, Business Highway 151, and out there, there's, in front of Menards, there's "Property Reduced." Big sign up there, "Reduced Price" on their property. Let him build, let him build his apartments out there. We could bust the students into Platteville in that case. Then the last thought I had too is, I almost lost my page, but the other thing is, like, if you're looking at lots and developing them, what if Kmart and Walmart and Farm &amp; Fleet decided, well, we have to develop some more money here, you know, so we'll, we'll put a student dorm in front of our buildings. We'll let the customers walk around it, you know? And I don't think you're going to visualize those managers of those companies possibly doing that, and I, that's the thing that surprised me, is that you as managers of our downtown would consider selling our lot when we need it for our business, and that's what I have. Thank you.
Under public statements in general, we have Connie Steinhoff and Bill Macbeth.
Good evening. I'm Connie Steinhoff. I'm the Senior Center Director. I'm here on behalf of our seniors to speak in general on this topic. One of the results of the proposed changes to Bonson Street is the loss of four parking spaces that are close to the senior center. These spaces are often used by seniors who have physical challenges that limit their ability to park further away. The impact of this loss is what I consider minimal, as there are four handicapped parking spaces and reasonably close parking available in the Bonson Street lot to accommodate these four vehicles. Tonight's issue paves the way for even more changes in parking near the senior center. The proposed parking, Pine Street development will displace as many as 16 seniors' vehicles that currently use the Bonson Street lot. Add the four parking spaces that you're discussing tonight, and that's a total of 20 lost spaces used by seniors. Up to eight of those lost spaces could be considered handicapped. I wanted to get an idea of just how many people who come to the center use handicapped parking spaces. So I asked the people who came to lunch on Friday how many had a handicap parking permit. I expected quite a few, but what I discovered really surprised me. 15 out of 32 people had handicap permits. Why do so many people who come to the center qualify for handicap parking permits? The answer's obvious. Many of their conditions are the result of normal aging. Aging affects all of us in different ways, but generally speaking, these physical changes can be simulated by the following exercises. Smear Vaseline on your glasses to simulate cataracts. Put cotton in your ears to simulate hearing loss. Wear a neck collar to simulate limited range of motion. Tape your joints to simulate arthritis. Put on gloves and then try to deal a deck of cards. Put pebbles or dried beans in your shoes and take a walk, or try to walk while breathing through a straw. It's been in the news for quite some time that the seniors are the fastest-growing and soon-to-be-largest age demographic. Modern medicine is making it possible for people to live longer, and senior centers play a large role in healthy aging. It follows then that the need for parking in close proximity to the center is only going to grow. I'm not here for or against this change to Bonson Street or the Pine Street development. I'm here for the seniors who enjoy and depend on the senior center and who need appropriate options if these, if these proposals are approved.
Bill Macbeth.
Yeah, hi, I'm Bill Macbeth. I'm a co-owner of the Duffel Market and represent the other owners as well as myself, and we are taxpayers through that market, the city of Platteville. We believe that having people, more people in a downtown area will probably be a positive for our business as well as other downtown businesses. So it's not the potential in downtown living space that's a concern for us, it's a decrease in available parking that the Stevens Construction Project will create. From our understanding, the lack of parking or difficulty finding a parking place in downtown is one of the most cited reasons for people shopping somewhere other than in the downtown area. And we might add that it's not just residents of Platteville. We have a lot of customers at our market from out of town. Suspect some of the reasons that they come there, because they could go to Dubuque and get just about the same thing that we offer, is they don't have to deal with downtown traffic, they don't have to deal with parking issues like you might in areas of Dubuque. From our understanding, the lack of parking or difficulty finding a parking place in downtown is one of the most cited reasons for people shopping somewhere other than in the downtown area. And we might add that it's not just residents of Platteville. We have a lot of customers at our market from out of town. Suspect some of the reasons that they come there, because they could go to Dubuque and get just about the same thing that we offer, is they don't have to deal with downtown traffic. They don't have to deal with parking issues like you might in areas of Dubuque. In the, in the, 2008 Main Street was resurfaced. We lost six parking spaces in downtown Main Street. According to the Platteville Journal, March 21, 2012, the Stevens Project will take 51 parking spaces that are now available in the city lot and create 20 leased and 22-hour spaces with a loss of 11 spaces. It's probably safe to assume that all 20 spaces will be leased, making them available, making them unavailable to downtown shoppers. To further compound the problem is the parking that will be required of the residents in the Stevens facility. The paper had it at 100 to 111 beds, so if it's full, we can assume that many people. And if we assume that only 50% of these residents need parking, and that the 20 leased spaces will be taken by the residents, where will the rest park? So not only do we have this issue downtown now, we're also putting more people downtown, on top of the people that live above our buildings, who can't find parking. It just really, really increases and exacerbates the parking problem that we now experience. This proposal only decreases the number of, not only decreases the number of spaces that are available to downtown shoppers, it adds more people hunting for the parking that will undoubtedly be taken, will take up customer parking. If this proposal goes through, what is the city and/or Stevens Construction prepared to do to ensure that there's adequate parking for downtown shoppers? You know, what, I've seen some of the long-term plan for Platteville, and I don't remember an apartment complex in that spot. I do remember a parking garage in that particular area, which I think you've heard a lot of support for that from the people that have spoken right now. We want our businesses to remain viable. We want a viable, vibrant downtown. To make that happen, there have to be places for people to park. Otherwise, they're not going to stop in our businesses, and it's a huge concern of ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
President Deleke, is, are any of the spaces now two-hour parking or 24-hour parking? Or are all the spaces now leased spaces that would be in this building?
The revised plan, we're all leased spaces. So anybody who hasn't seen the revised plan, in fact, the revised plan greatly increased the number of parking spaces, because when we saw the original one, our reaction was there's not enough parking there for that. And in fact, my understanding is that, in fact, it creates one more space on that site than exists right now. The issue is that they become long-term leased spots, which cuts short-term parking, which means we have to make some kind of adjustment to return that short-term parking someplace downtown. That's where we ended it at the last meeting. I do wanna, somebody asked about whether we answer questions or not. I do wanna note a few things here, kind of in response to that. Why, somebody asked why, Tom Morris, I think, asked why seven feet. Originally, the developer wanted the whole street, and we said that we don't think so. We don't like that idea. I'm sure no one here likes that idea. And so the question was, can we retain traffic flow and still do this? And so that was as much as they could get and still retain both a lane for the post office, so we could retain that box, have room for a sidewalk, as well as to have a traffic lane next to that, which is why that particular number. Somebody mentioned the Pioneer Ford site. I won't pull Tim in here tonight, because I'm sure that he's not prepared to talk about it, but there are things going on with the Pioneer Ford site, and, and hopefully, the folks understand that we can't just snap our fingers or wave a wand and make a developer do something in town. We have to take what developers want to do, rather than tell them what they want, because they'll go somewhere else more often than not. In fact, most of the time. I've discussed downtown parking with others, engineers and so on, looking for alternatives. I had an interesting idea presented to me Saturday by someone who says we should just grid at the darn lines downtown. What they do is, is create parking spots for, for Lincoln Navigators, and whether you've got a Lincoln Navigator or a Smart Car, you end up spending the same amount of space to park. And I think as a downtown, we ought to look at, at relining those or getting rid of them entirely. And I don't have any doubt that we could generate another 10 parking spots downtown just by adjusting the lines. Finally, somebody asked about, how would we require the developer to, to, to make available half of this parking for leased parking that doesn't belong, or to, for cars that doesn't belong, that don't belong to anybody who's living in that place? And we literally would do that in the developer's agreement, that that would be a requirement. That originally, when they proposed this, and I'm not sure how many people know this, they had one layer of parking in there, which was for their tenants. And we looked at that, and we blinked twice, and we said, you can't just pull 50 parking spots out of downtown and not replace it, which is why the plan altered to what it is. They would not have been able to do this had they not added that second layer of parking. And it's very difficult, in this day and age, to provide for any sort of parking structure, given the cost structure for parking. And $15,000 a slot is about what it is at a minimum to provide parking. And if you were going to try to amortize that over the life of a facility, you'd probably be talking about $125 a month to park for somebody in there, or somebody else is on the hook for it. So we had given that some thought. It's not something that's necessarily new, and that may answer some of the questions and concerns that people had.
Well, there were two other questions that were asked, and I would appreciate an answer. Howard, I guess the, the question was, water and sewer, is it adequate for an apartment? The proposed building, this apartment building, is the water and sewer adequate in the area? Or would there have to be improvements made?
There's, there's water and sewer in Pine Street that, that would be available for that.
And it wouldn't have to be, the, it would not have to be upgraded to accommodate that?
No.
Okay. And then the other question that was asked was, how was the price of the lot determined?
When we created this development agreement, the initial concept was to provide the land as a development incentive. And rather than do that, we looked at the Tiff District and suggested that this is a partnership between all of the taxing jurisdictions to make economic development happen. To, you're basically offering an incentive to encourage development. So the concept is that we have the Tiff District provide the incentive to the developer, and then the developer buy the land from the city. The net impact to the developer is that they get the land at no cost. But at the same time, the city benefits because they get what is established as a fair market value for the property. The fair market value dollar amount was arrived at by, through consultation with our city assessor. So this is what he would suggest a property of that size is worth.
Other comments now?
Sure, sure.
I guess this is my part of council discussion. I've had numerous conversations with businesspeople downtown. I've had numerous conversations with the Main Street Director. Initially, I really wanted to be in favor of this project, because I think that having more people downtown is what businesspeople say they want. And so when the first proposal came in, and it was, I think, 14 public two-hour spaces for parking, I believe that's what it was.
14 or 16, something like that.
And the other spaces were going to be leased. And in that proposal, the city would have from June until August to lease those spots. And if the city did not have people come forward, then after that, the developer would have the option of leasing those spots. So as a council, we said that doesn't look reasonable after having 51 parking spaces in there. So the developer did come back with a proposal last week and came up with additional parking spaces. However, all of those spaces would be leased. And that is difficult. So I thought about the possibility of splitting that, that first floor, where half would be leased and half would be two-hour parking. But then the question of enforcement came up, and then the question of prevailing wage to build this structure came up. And in the end, after talking to a lot of businesspeople, I have to agree with our downtown revitalization plan. This parking lot should be kept as a parking lot. If you look at the incentives that we're talking about for the developer, it's about $800,000. Now granted, there's tax base that would be created, but as Mr. Crowderwell expressed, it would take a number of years before the city would see actual tax dollars coming into the budget. Washington Place Apartments was mentioned on Washington Street. That project has 110 bedrooms, extremely similar to the one downtown being proposed. That project has 46 surface parking spaces and 53 underground spaces, for a total of 98 spaces for the tenants of that property. That project has been completely funded by the developer. I asked how, how tall a building could be downtown. It could be 50 feet. So I'm not saying that we have to give up on this idea completely, but I'm saying perhaps it needs to be two layers of public parking, and then I don't know if something could be done on top of that. I agree that Mr. Bolt's property is ideal for development. I don't know if we can work the developer and Mr. Bolt to accomplish that or not, but if we're talking about $800,000 for this lot, maybe we can talk about that. We're also talking about the library block, you know, whether or not that could be redeveloped. Well, maybe that's an area for this developer to go to. And finally, I would say that 51 spaces is just too much. I mean, that's too much to give up for the downtown area. I am personally in favor of permit parking. I've been advocating that, kind of as a test. I would like to take the 10 spots just right next door here and do permit parking, just to see what kind of a demand there is. But the city would be determining the, the price, not the developer. And we need an ordinance, and I expressed this at one other council meeting. We need an ordinance, and we need it now, not later, for requiring parking for new downtown development. Just as we require for any development that takes place off-site, off of downtown, we need something for new development downtown. And I know that there, comment has been made that, you know, there are a lot of tenants downtown, and it should be the building owner's responsibility to find parking for those tenants. Unless we tear down buildings, that's not going to happen. But when you have an empty parcel, that's the opportunity then to say, and included in your development is parking. And 35 spots, I think, is what this developer is proposing. And I respect these developers. I think that they really, really want to build in Platteville. I just don't think this is the right location, and I think that we really need to rethink this whole project and either vote it down this evening and go back and look at what could $800,000 do for a second layer of parking, or at least table it and discuss other options.
Folks, please. This is a, excuse me, please. This, this is a public meeting, and we really cannot have that kind of disruption here. We're here to hear what's going on, to hear people's points of view, and I consider it to be a significant lack of decorum when we do that. So let's please try to maintain some kind of civil discourse here and, and decorum. Any other comments or discussion or so on?
Well, after the work session we had last week with the developer, we went over the public parking spaces available in the downtown area and added those to, these on the lower level of this project. And I believe it was Barb, you counted them up, and you said in the end, there are going to be 40 more public parking spaces than what exists.
There will be 50 less public parking spaces than currently exist. It'll go from 723 public parking spaces to 674 public parking spaces. So there will actually be a net loss of 49 parking spaces that are open for the public. There would be a net gain of 41 total parking spaces, but the majority of those obviously would become as private spots, leased spots.
A net gain of 41.
There's a net gain of 41, but there's a net loss of 49 public spots.
Yeah, and then we start discussing this parking lot out here.
That includes those spaces.
Yeah, and how some of those could be changed from two-hour parking to 12-hour parking. In other words, park, public parking lots can be reconfigured to, around town to accommodate some of the loss from this project.
Well, there aren't additional spots.
Oh, another thing too, regarding the Washington Street project, the gentleman who got up and spoke and said he was in favor, I can tell you, there are a lot of neighbors around that development that's going up right now that were certainly not happy about it, and they are probably still mad at the council about making that decision. I think they're sitting right back there. So it seems, you know, no matter what development is, is proposed, there is always going to be someone who's, who's against it, particularly when it's in, you know, your backyard. One question too I had, and I forgot to ask the developer at the work session last week. Perhaps, Larry, you know, this is called student housing. Are they going to be living there in the summertime, do you know?
No, I do not know that. I anticipate that they'll need a full-year lease for their cash flow, but I don't know if the students will pay rent and go home for the summer, or if they will stay.
Some will, some won't.
Yeah, it's, and, and I think you noted earlier, 600,000 of these incentives are to provide the parking. I mean, it's not as though the developer would get all of that incentive money if they weren't providing the public parking.
But the six...
At our, at our request, I believe.
I understand at our request, but that request originally, as I understood it, was for public parking, not leased parking. And so this is a $600,000 amount for leased parking.
Oh, I would disagree with that. We've had this discussion before, and if you talk to a number of people in town, they want to know why people downtown get to park for free on public land, but they have to pay taxes on their own driveways. And so it's still public parking, it's just leased public parking. And so even though we can characterize it as we've lost it, the reality is it still exists. Those spots are still there. And in fact, there are a lot of people downtown that would love to have an interior permanent spot, they didn't have to chase down every month, and someplace out of the weather. So there have been, a lot of people indicate that this is a desirable thing, and as long as the developer agreement makes sure that that half of that parking, the part that the $600,000 covers, is retained as public leased parking, not private leased parking, we don't lose that parking. If we characterize it as gone, it's not gone. And, and if we turn around and find other places where we have 24-hour parking in the downtown area and turn that to two-hour, we don't have a net loss. We have a reconfiguration. And, you know, that may or may not be enough of a reason to do this or not do it, but we need to make sure that we understand what this really is. And it isn't that somehow, we're giving this developer $600,000 and we're taking parking away. The reason why they're getting that is to create the parking, not to take it away. And the, the thing that happened originally with this plan was it didn't have enough parking. The new plan has a lot. We've got to deal with short-term parking in some fashion, and we have to find a way to deal with that. Otherwise, it's, it's not going to be a very desirable kind of thing. So the idea that somehow we're losing a lot of parking, that's kind of a disingenuous argument, in my opinion, because we're not losing it. We're reconfiguring it. And, and for what it's worth, I'll note this, we've had these conversations a number of times, that I think the days of free parking downtown in any kind of long-term fashion are over. We can't afford to give that land away. It's too valuable, and it's not fair to all taxpayers that they have to pay for that land and the maintenance of that, and the snow clearing and so on, for the benefit of some at the expense of others. It's a private benefit, but it's a socialized or public expense. And everybody knows what's happening with the state and the cuts and everything else. I think the days of that are pretty much over, because we've had a pretty good consensus that we're going to have to move that direction. So let's realize that we're not really losing much in the way of parking. We're, if, if any, we're reconfiguring it.
We're reconfiguring, but the reconfiguration allows all leased spots, Mike, which means if I'm a customer downtown, I now have no parking lot on the south side of Main Street. I have none. Everything's on the north side. And we can talk about these 10 spots over here, we're not creating spots. They're there already. We just asked some city employees, not city employees, I'm sorry, we asked that some city vehicles be moved off of those spots. We are not creating spots. They're already existing.
Well, we did create them. They weren't available for use before, because there was a cars in there. Now they are available, so they've been created.
Spot that's always, it's always been there.
Yeah, but they weren't available for public use. Now they are.
If you take, if you take 24-hour spots and change them into two-hour spots for parking for customers, all you're doing is taking those 24-hour cars and pushing them further down somebody's street. This does not solve the problem. It very simply pushes it further out into neighborhoods. And I pay taxes like everyone else in this room. I'm happy to have that parking lot, and I will continue to be happy to pay parking for that particular lot. I think it's critical. I think it's critical to the downtown that we provide parking.
If at some point we decide to put in parking meters, that's a whole nother discussion. I would much prefer seeing, using this lot for parking, putting another layer of parking on there, and if we can develop something above that that works, that's great. But right now, the way it's configured, we took away all parking for any customer, and I am not going to pay fifty dollars a month as a customer, so I guarantee a spot. That was another question that was asked, by the way, who will enforce the lease violators? And I believe that when we had our discussion at our work session, there's the whole question about it's private property. You know, well, our police officers don't go down to, as I understand, at McGregor Plaza and enforce parking down there, it's private property. So it opens a lot of questions that don't seem to have answers right now, but ultimately, we're taking away fifty-one spots. For customer parking, we are taking away fifty-one spots, or the existing tenants on Main.
You know, I got to be honest here, this is a little disingenuous. Half the parking spots that are there now are twenty-four-hour spots, there aren't customers parking in those, they're full all the time. And so to say we're taking away that many spots, that's not really what's there.
Well, what you're doing is adding a hundred-and-ten beds with thirty-five parking spaces for a hundred-and-ten beds, and now you've got the twenty-four-hour parking.
It's not thirty-five spaces, that wasn't what the plan showed.
What did it show on second floor?
I believe forty-six or forty-five.
On second floor? Forty-six.
We can disagree here, we can come to some conclusion, but we've got to get the facts straight.
We were talking about policing, there won't be a need for policing because it's enclosed.
You have to have a garage door opener. Okay, so we don't need to worry about that, was another question that was asked, if the council decides it's all going to be leased, then fine.
Well, the question before us tonight, if I'm right, is this right, is whether or not to close this street.
They partially banned it.
To partially close it, so that's what we're going to vote on. If we vote no on it, that doesn't mean that this, there may be some changes in the proposal, and it may go forward. So I don't know what's going to happen there. But I spent a lot of time, I wasn't at the meeting, your meeting last week, and I didn't miss it either.
Okay, you have a sun can, actually, Steve.
I'm glad I wasn't at it after I read some of the emails, and I did read, spent a lot of time reading the letters to the council and the emails that were going back and forth, including the one that said there's no reason to go to the council meeting, they won't listen to us anyway, Kathy, but we'll try to listen to you anyway. Okay, well, anyway, I did read all these, and I wish I could come up with a magic solution. A couple, just a couple comments. I read in here from a lot of people saying that, gee, they have a problem because their employees have to go out and move their car every two hours. I don't feel sorry for you because you got to go out and move your car, your employees shouldn't be parking there in the first place. If you want somebody, if you want a spot open for your people to do business in your establishment, don't have your employees parking in those two-hour slots. That would be the worst thing you could do. So if somebody's got a problem with that, tell them to go park somewhere else. I asked a couple of somebody today, where do they park, you know, do you park and have to move your car? Shouldn't. You know, park off the street. For thirty-five years, I've been paying for a place to park at the university. Now, I got three choices. I could get there at seven-thirty in the morning, and then I could park close to where my office was, or I could buy and pay to park on campus, or I could park four or five blocks away. And depending upon when I went, even when I paid for it, sometimes I didn't have a place to park anyway. And sometimes I'd have to park four or five blocks away, and sometimes it was, I thought, well, why am I even driving a car? I might as well just walk, I end up living that far away anyway. So I guess what I'm saying is that I think we're in a situation where people are going to have to realize that they're just going to have to start paying to park around Plattville. And there are a lot of people that have been paying to park around Plattville, and there's a lot of people that aren't. As far as tenants go, maybe, I have some tenants, I provide off-street parking for them. I have to pay for the blacktop so that they can park there, I have to pay taxes on that, nobody's giving that to me. So, you know, maybe we're looking, maybe we're going to, I think, one thing I did hear was that we shouldn't be waiting thirty-seven years to make a decision, if that was the, if I remember that. I think we need to make a decision, and we need to make a decision within the, soon, in the next six months, a year, make a decision. I'm willing at this point to vote no on this particular project for this evening and see what, where it goes and what falls out. But I also think that we need, as a community, to make some decisions and to make it fast. Now, some of us on the council have been saying, okay, where do we want this parking, and how are we going to pay for it? We know we can pay for it, we can pay for it by not paving streets for one year. Or we can do a pretty good job of funding that, is that what the city of Plattville wants? I'm sure the people in this audience would say, yeah, that's a good idea. But the people that are living out away from the downtown area and want to get their street, Jewett Street, next year, are saying, no, that's a bad decision, and forest streets, and some of the ones that are up for it.
Broadway needs to be done.
Which happens to be the one I drive on. So I guess what I'm saying is that, depending upon your point of view, which way should we go on this? Do we spend the money for the downtown parking, or should we continue? We're trying, we've been trying as a council, I know in the last four or five years, we have made an exerted, we have made an effort to increase the amount of money we spend on streets, because more than downtown parking, if I hear any complaints, it's more about the roads than anything else. So we're trying to address that. Senior citizen, that's one of the questions I am very concerned about. What, how is this going to affect the senior citizen? Connie talked about it, and maybe it's because I'm going to be a senior, I am a senior citizen, I guess, and I'm going to be maybe using that facility pretty soon. So I'm very concerned about that. But I think the Senior Citizen Center, short-term, we might have some problems, but I think long-term, I think most of us have agreed, and we've had discussion, that sometime, in very close, soon, we're going to have to come up with a different place for senior citizens. It's expanding the demands there, and we're going to have to meet that need in Plattville. So I don't know, but I think we're going to have to start paying for parking.
Other comments? I want to add one other thing too, which is, I think what Steve says here is right, the senior center is expanding. We've had initial, kind of joking around, talking about using this building, the police station's out of here, there's a huge unused area, that could be remodeled to the tune of probably two, three-hundred thousand dollars, sell the existing building, have it go back on the tax rolls and be performing, and have a nicer students, a student center. Senior center. Let's get done with the meeting there. A nicer senior center in a place like this with more parking and more access to parking. If you look around City Hall, anybody's ever looked at it around here, have you ever seen a time in the last year when all the parking around City Hall has been used? I park in front all the time here, and it's always empty. And so there's a lot of parking over here. The second thing to note is, and this has always been a conundrum for people downtown, is people will go to Walmart and they'll walk three or four blocks into the store just to get to the place they want to go, but they won't walk half a block downtown. And it's a bizarre thing. Everybody knows they want to park right in front of the store, and everybody gets that, and it'd be kind of nice to see some kind of promotion at some point that would say, you can either walk four blocks to go to Walmart or half a block to go here, which makes more sense, and start having people realize that they don't need, have to park right in front of a store in order to be able to patronize it. I haven't been able to find any place I needed to go in the last year that I couldn't get within a block of, ever. And I think that that characterizes most of the people downtown, on Main Street and elsewhere. And we really need to realize that what's perceived here as a parking problem is, in fact, people perceiving it as a convenience problem. We were looking at all the parking spots up around Houston State Bank, there's a ton of them. People can walk down to the Driftless Market, they're half a block away from that, won't park there, to walk to the Driftless Market, as an example. So when we say there's a parking problem, let's, we have to be careful in how we say that. There's a perceived convenience problem, there isn't so much, I think, a parking problem, so. Are we ready to close the public hearing?
I just want to say that we adapted a downtown revitalization plan, and I support that downtown revitalization plan. I also believe parking in downtown is very important. Move to close the public hearing.
The motion is second to close the public hearing, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Come in council, action.
I would move to not approve the discontinuation of the portion of Bonson Street.
Second to the motion.
The motion is second, is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Steiner?
No.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
I knew this was going to come down to me.
What's the motion again?
To not approve the discontinuation of a portion of Bonson Street.
To not approve it?
Right.
And I'm going to vote to not approve it.
That a no?
If that's what a no is, that's what I'm voting.
Well, Jan's got to have something to write down there.
It'd be a yes.
Yes, yes, excuse me, I had that backwards, I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to do a fast one here.
Trying to figure it out.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, okay, we're good.
Thank you all for coming, thank you for your input, and thank you for being reasonable about it, which hasn't always happened. Next on the agenda tonight is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you'd prefer separate discussion and action.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I need to make an appointment here. Try to get. Excuse me, Laurie, we're having a meeting here, please, Laurie, no, 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 Laurie, we're having a meeting here. Laurie Barr, please, this is absolutely out of order. Wow. Unbelievable. All right, we're back to the consent calendar here. Item A is the minutes of the last council meeting, B is payment of bills, C is appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight, April Fuhr to the Community Development Board, and Tom Knoll to the Board of Review.
To the what development?
Community Development Board.
Community development.
Community Development Board.
K development.
All right. Item D is licenses, one and or two-year operators' licenses, temporary Class B license for the Delta Sigma Phi fraternity to sell fermented malt beverages at three-eighty-five West Pine Street on May fourth for Delta Fest, which is a charity band festival, rain date of May fifth, three taxi driver licenses. Under permits, a street closing request for Bradford Street from Greenwood to and including the intersection with Pine, and the intersection with Bradford to three-forty-five West Pine Street on May fourth for Delta Fest, rain date May fifth. Two fireworks for the July fourth celebration, and three, the five-k run walk for the July fourth celebrations. Is there any item on which you'd prefer separate discussion and action?
No, we've already made a motion.
I didn't recognize the motion.
You did?
I did not recognize the motion, so do it again. I mean, I had to make the appointments.
Motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second?
Your motion is second, all in favor, say aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. Tonight, under citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any, we have, I've lost one here. Did I get them all? Jim Rosemeyer?
We had a question.
One back there.
There was a question about, there was a gentleman who had a question, I can't remember what it was about.
Mr. Rosemeyer, did I put one in, or?
No, I didn't see one from him, but there was another one there.
Here it is. Scott Austin would like to discuss something about parks and the current ball fields. There was one here somewhere. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott Austin, and I just wanted to discuss, I understand that there's consideration for taking twenty-five thousand dollars and creating some soccer fields, and my concern is, is why are we not taking care of the fields that we have over there? Has anybody of you walked those fields? My daughter plays ball, you walk those fields and they're a mess, they haven't been rolled. There's ditches in them, you know, from where the bleachers sat from the tractor pulls, you know, it needs to be rolled, it needs to be taken care of. You know, these kids are going to be breaking their necks out there playing ball.
I'm smiling about one thing, it's March, it just seems like June.
Well, I know. Okay, their first game is Friday, all right?
I know.
And then, you know, and then you guys are going to take twenty-five thousand dollars and create more space, and you're not taking care of what you have. That's my point.
I just want to know one thing, have you talked to the Parks and Recreation Committee about this? Or the Parks Recreation Director?
I've talked to Dean Feldman.
Okay.
He's on the board.
Okay, have you talked to the Recreation Director at all?
No.
That might be a place to go to, but we'll take that under advisement.
It's never been brought to the board, Mike, it's never been brought up to the board.
We've never discussed this.
At the board.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Parks and Rec, the board has not discussed it?
Just a simple point of, you know, why spend more money on other space, let's take care of what we got.
I suspect they have that stuff in the budget, they just haven't gotten to it, but that would just be.
I will follow up and make sure we get the soccer fields rolled.
It's the baseball fields, is it? Or is it soccer fields?
Baseball and soccer, if you walk the soccer fields, they're a mess as well, so.
Thank you. Next, Jim Rosemeyer, followed by Kirk Timlin.
Good evening, I'm Jim Rosemeyer, and I'm just here to make an announcement that we have another candidate for the Alderman-at-Large position. Dick Bonin, residence of Plattville, has asked to be a candidate, a writing candidate on our, is it Tuesday election? And I just want to point out that he's a longtime resident of Plattville and a war veteran, and he served our city in multiple capacities, and just recently, he's on the planning commission. He'd like to have a chance to serve again as a writing candidate for Alderman-at-Large on the Tuesday election. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirk Timlin?
I'm Kirk Timlin. I didn't know if I needed to come up here or not to explain what we had planned for the Fourth of July and what we were coming in front of the council to request. I see nobody else showed up with my committee tonight, so I'm kind of here on my lonesome. But anyway, what we'd like to do, what we're proposing to do, if the city would allow us to, is we'd like to bring a tri-state truck and tractor pull to the city on July third with a rain date of July fourth. And then we'd like to run the fireworks program similar to what we did last year. We'd like to have live music up at the park again, and then have the fireworks show at night, and kind of expand on the whole thing of having a two-day event up there, if that's possible. Something similar to Dairy Days, but not Dairy Days, obviously, but we are kind of trying to exploit the thing that when the holiday doesn't fall on the weekend, we almost have July Fourth Eve. We almost created another Friday night on the third, so we'd like to be able to exploit that and try something new. The Broglies from Scott Implement have said that they'd help us out in the endeavor here to try to put something together with tri-state truck and tractor pullers, it's the same ones that are doing the Dairy Days thing. And Steve has assured us that by having another one here, we won't hurt the Dairy Days one by any means. What we're looking at doing is they lost a date down in Petosi this year, so we're looking at the opportunity there. Right now, in our area, there is not another function that those truck and tractor pullers go to, per se. So we're hoping that we can have a draw for them to come here, and like I say, have a backup rain date of the fourth. So that's all I wanted to comment on. If there's any questions, happy to try to address them.
The only concern I can think of is it's kind of understood by the folks who live near there that over Dairy Days weekend, they're going to have some exciting events very nearby then with the trucks and the tractors, and whether there's been any contact with the people who live near there to find out if they're okay with this.
We actually, we actually haven't made contact with anybody yet, Mike, we were coming to the council first. What we did last year when we did the ban thing is we went around and banged on doors. Actually, the J.C.'s were active in that, went around, talked to the property owners and stuff, and said, here's what we're proposing to do. You know, are you all right with this, boom, 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 went down the line, and we had said that we would do the same thing this year. You know, if we're going to do it, expand it, we would let people know once again what's going on and things like that. And last year, everybody was more than willing to let us do what we needed to do. We told them what time things were going to end, and we did close it up at that time, so, and we had good cooperation and good help from the police department, so.
What would the hours be then for the tractor pull?
That hasn't been confirmed yet, we haven't confirmed anything. It would probably, the show would probably run from about seven o'clock till eleven o'clock, is what we're thinking.
My question is, does this require a permit to do a truck and tractor pull? I like the idea, but I just wondered, because the Fourth of July just talks about the fireworks, so I'm just wondering if a permit is.
Well, that's, that was the other question that came up. That's why we're up here now instead of...
Don't you get a park permit for the entire park for the day or the two days?
We get, we get a park permit for the 4th typically, but we would expand that park permit to the 3rd, and obviously, then the J.C.'s would expand the request for the liquor license to the 3rd and the 4th, is what would happen.
Maybe you could give those people who live nearby a ride on a tractor or something. We'll leave that up to Mr. Rupp. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Next, tonight, under the agenda is reports, committee reports, airport commission.
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add. We have a new runway going in this year, don't we?
Yes.
That'd be kind of interesting. Parks, Forestry and Recreation Committee?
Nothing to add.
Brown Tree Gallery?
Yeah, we'd like to announce the gallery opens for this season, the Sunday, April 1st, and the exhibit would be the 18th Annual Spring Exhibit.
Thank you. Under other reports, we have the UW Platteville Transportation and Parking Update, the Building Inspection Report, and Department Progress Reports. Any items there, comments, questions?
Yes, I, in reading the university's report, I note that it indicates that the university is finalizing a lease agreement to lease 70 stalls at the McGregor Plaza Shopping Center for remote parking for residence hall students.
That's good news.
Thought I would note that. People wouldn't otherwise know what I suspect.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Moving on then, tonight, the action items. Item A is the repeal of the tax increment district TID incentive policy. Brief staff presentation or discussion?
Certainly. This is a policy that was enacted May 15th, 2006. If you turn to page three of the policy, it has calculations as to how much the contribution will be for incentives. Excuse me, I assumed it was page three. It references 1% of TID incentive for every $50,000 of construction. Therefore, if you assume a $5 million building, that's about 100% of the construction costs. I'm asking the city council to consider just repealing the TID incentive policy, and then I will sit down with staff and try to create a new one. At our last meeting, I believe one of the council members suggested just the paragraph should be removed. I just look for direction from the city council at this point. Clearly, something needs to be changed in our policy.
I'd like the staff to sit down with the Pedic and redo the policy where needed, and I don't favor getting rid of the whole policy.
I wasn't at the last meeting, but read the minutes from the meeting, and I would agree. I don't understand why we would get rid of all entire policy when there's only a portion of it that needs revision. It would seem to me that the appropriate thing would be for staff to sit with Pedic and come back with a suggested revision, rather than to just trash a policy that we've had since 2006, that obviously, people have, you know... If this is the only one little area, so I certainly don't favor repealing it.
What about a motion to repeal that paragraph and then instruct staff to work with Pedic to offer some revisions as necessary?
I so move. I make a motion. We direct staff to look at para, or portion A, two, and the bullet point, particularly that deals with increases in equalized value in the amount of incentive, and to bring back a recommendation by the second meeting in April.
Second to the motion.
The motion is second. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Steiner?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item B, tonight, is the Library Board of Trustees' request for transfer of funds. I'm guessing Carolyn, maybe you're the person that should talk about that.
I guess so. You have a letter in, in your packet there. I wanted to address the $40,000 first, the $40,915. Last time, I was a little vague about where that money was being spent, and I have your answer. The $40,915 was money that Mrs. Frost had asked be moved from the library building account to our regular budget. I don't know her intent. I assume she was going to use it for something. However, it was not spent. We did have a significant amount of money left over at the end of last year, and so the request is that that $40,915 be restored to the library building fund. So that's the first part of it. The $50,000 amount request is, the request for that is not a transfer, but just not to use it for a designated amount as proposed in the 2012 budget.
And the initial purpose or purposes of these funds was what?
In 2000...
You were given the money for what purpose or purposes?
In 2007, we asked that money that we had in our library funding, our library account from the county funding, be placed in a specific designated amount for a new library building. In 2007, we were discussing that with Mr. Burner, and on advice from state and our system, it was advised that we put a huge portion of that money into a building fund, and that's where this money is from.
So Carolyn, was the initial amount 175,000?
Yes, it was, and then it accumulated interest over the years.
Okay, but now of that 175,000, it's 90,000 left? Is that it?
No. Interest is built on that 175,000, and when I was here, I think it had reached maybe 184,000. What happened the last three years, I don't have all the paperwork on, but it still accumulated some interest. Mrs. Frost asked that 40,915 of that to, with some protestation from finance, be transferred to our budget. However, there was no indication how she was going to use, and it was not used, and so we were just asking that that portion be transferred back. The $50,000 is still in the account. However, on page six of your budget book, there's a statement that $50,000 will be used out of the library building fund for, for capital projects, and we're just saying, please don't transfer that money, the $50,000. We do have some care that we need to take care of in our building. It's, we've delayed it for a while because of talk of a new building, talk of no new building. It's starting to deteriorate, and so we would like to have that, all that money restored to the library building fund.
I guess a logical question, then, if the decision would be made to not use that $50,000 in CIP, then we would, as a council, have to make an adjustment, because that money would not be there. I don't think we discussed that, but I don't know if there's anything in the CIP. I don't remember. I'd have to look it up for the library. Maybe the $50,000 can be used for the library, but I don't remember.
We do have some money in the capital fund, and that's designated towards the lights that badly need replacing. So there's money in our capital fund, but this is from the library building fund.
Okay.
I should note that there's been kind of a balancing act being tried to be played here, which is if there's going to be a new building, do you wanna spend a lot of money updating an old building that either gets sold or torn down, and the answer to that is no, but if we're not gonna get a new building anytime soon, then there really are some things that need to be done, and so they're trying to balance these two things. Nobody's quite sure with the crystal ball what, what's going to happen, so...
I make a motion that we honor the library board's request and restore, request the $50,000 from the library building fund not be appropriated as described in our original budget, and that we re, we transfer, that we give them the $40,915.
Oh, second.
The motion is second. Discussion.
I believe this is a budget amendment, and it will require two-thirds of the city council approval. Dwayne, is that what your take is?
Yes, but I'm also concerned about what are you gonna do, how you can balance the budget. It's nice to say you're taking $50,000 away out of $12,000 of our budget. What are you offsetting it with? Are you reducing streets?
I'll bring forward a proposal to eliminate a piece of machinery or something to reduce 50,000.
This is the 40,000 first. The other one, the 50,000, is under information.
She mentioned both in the motion.
She mentioned both.
Okay, but you wanna do them both in one motion? Is that what you're...
Yeah. They were both in this library building fund money thing.
The information item, I believe, is the request to apply for grants.
Apply for grants. It doesn't have anything to do with this money.
And, and I believe the 40,000 would be treated as a simple carryover for, I can't see Dwayne, the, the fund balance that's left at the end of the year. So, much like you would, I mean, if the rec department didn't spend their money, you'd carry, you'd, they could ask to have it carried over to the next year. So your analysis on that is simply, do you agree with carrying money from one year to the next or not? The 50,000 is something where we will have to plug a little bit of a budget hole if you agree not to use that.
Can I comment on the 40,000? I believe the 40,000, we were asking to go back into the library building fund also.
Okay.
Correct. And, and the money, Larry, there's 65,000 that the library never used, so it's, theory is a carryover, but they wanna put that 40,000 that rose allocated, and there will be 25,000 coming back in the general budget, Dwayne, to help you come up with the other 50. There's 25 of it going back in.
Yeah, and if you recall, we dropped, we tapped into that, we didn't borrow this year, we tapped into over a million dollars, so there is an offset there we're trying to make up too, so...
Actually, I...
I'm wondering why it's being brought in this format here.
Well, I, I was...
I'm wondering why we're acting on this letter and why it's not being brought forth like everything else is with a staff recommendation with the numbers tied in. I don't think this is something we should be acting on based upon this letter.
Well, the library board asked to have something put forward, and, and we've honored that, and so if it's not the right format and you'd like to have it in a different one, we certainly can do that.
I make a motion to table it until it's brought forth.
No, we already have it. Well, actually, he can table a motion that's on the floor. Try a motion to table it until it's brought forth with a staff recommendation.
There, there is carryover scheduled, and that comes out of your next meeting, so we're, staff is working on that for other departments.
I'd like some kind of memo.
That motion dies, Steve. You're gonna have to try again. We didn't get a second on it.
Sorry. I should have seconded.
Well, did we ask for a second?
I didn't ask for one. I waited for one.
I was seconding it.
We got a second.
And, and I would very much like to...
Okay, motion to table is not debatable at all, so we should just simply vote it.
But I could, can I ask for information?
Sure.
Okay.
After, after we vote.
Okay.
Try to at least stay with Robert's rules a little bit. We have a motion to table. This request, motion to table is non-debatable. A roll call vote, please.
Steiner? What are we voting on again?
Table of arms motion.
Table it so it can be brought forward.
No. Was Patrice? No, she said no. I said no. Killian?
No.
Deleke?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
No.
Miller?
No.
Becker?
Yeah, I don't know how to vote.
Now may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
All right.
No.
Yes.
I would like to have something from our city manager explaining how this budget shortfall will be reconciled. It's, it's fine to say a piece of machinery, but I don't know what that means, and I know that we really trimmed the budget this year and do not have a lot of money sitting there to use in cases like this. Whether it got spent or not, we used it as sort of a part of our budget.
In, in all fairness, I said that because it was my anticipation that that's what the council wanted. If that's not what you want, then, I mean, I need some direction as to, do you want to look at removing machinery, or do you want to take money out of the fund balance to add to the budget?
You know, I think what I personally would like, Larry, is, is to see both. I, I would like to see that fund budget.
Options.
Balance, you know, yeah, I'd like to see a fund balance. I'd like to see where we are, what, you know, there are other things that may come back and have to be used this year, so yes, I'd like to see it. I have no problem with the request. I actually, if we voted tonight, I, that'd be fine, but I really think we need to have something to see.
I agree with you, and I'm gonna vote no, 'cause I think we oughta see something like that.
Well, yes, we should see something. I don't think we really all know what we're voting on.
It isn't that I'm against doing it. I think we oughta see something like that before we proceed, is my sense.
Can you amend your...
This letter came to us in January. In my opinion, or in February. As fast as we're moving on everything else, in my opinion, there's no reason we shouldn't have had that option tonight.
Is there a reason why we gotta vote on it tonight? That's really the question.
Well, I think the library board needs to know if they're gonna go ahead with some things.
They, they need to know that within two weeks? They can't wait two weeks?
You know, it's really interesting that we can fast-track some projects and drag our feet on others. In my opinion, everything that comes to the council should have the sheet on it that lists the benefits and the staff recommendation, and that doesn't always happen.
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? What's the motion?
Our motion to give them the money.
To approve the 40,000 plus the 50,000. Is that correct, Jan?
Yes. Ready?
Roll call vote, please.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
No.
Motion carries.
I believe that's two-thirds.
But I would still like the information that I requested. Thank you.
Hey, my vote was not because I don't agree with it. It's that I think we could do this other stuff. It wouldn't hurt to wait two weeks. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. I've lost my agenda here. Been a great night, hasn't it? Item C is to award contract 1-12 to Jewett Street Reconstruction.
Yes, Jewett Street Reconstruction bids were, came in. We had 10 bidders. Overall construction cost, little over a million dollars. The total overall budget, 995,000. Overall project is over budget by just under $124,000. The Washington and Spring Street project came in under budget at little under $93,000. If we allocate that amount of money, that, balance that against Jewett Street, we're still over by a little over $31,000. I would recommend that we go ahead and award the contracts, and staff would internally allocate money from our street maintenance that would decrease funding available for thin overlays in order to complete this project. So I'm recommending award the underground to Madrell and the street reconstruction to McGuire for the bid prices as listed.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. I should note the Water and Sewer Commission approved the, their half of this.
Correct.
Last night, so... The motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item D is contract 14-12, weeding grass mowing. Motion's approved.
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any discussion?
Motion to approve the staff recommendations?
Yes.
We'll just put some generic motion to approves in there and deal them out as we need them. The motion is second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item E is contract 22-12 for crack filling. Let me just note here that this is a recommendation to award the contract to Farner Asphalt at the bid prices of $16,054.08 and 8 cents, so at least people know what we're voting on.
Motion approved.
Second.
The motion is second. Discussion.
How in the world is it that we already need to seal a joint at Chestnut and Marquis? Was this not done correctly when this street was built? Wasn't that just last year or perhaps the year before, Howard?
2010 was when it was in, when it was done. What I'm saying is this is a preventive measure that I believe needs to be done. We've done it for Main Street, and we've done it for Valley Road. But because this was a DOT project under the ARRA, they do not recognize joint sealing as, as a maintenance tool for concrete streets. So what I'm recommending is that we, we in fact go back and do it as if it were like any of our other streets that we've done. So, what I'm recommending is that we, we in fact go back and do it as if it were like any of our other streets that we've done here lately.
And so the joint sealing is to prevent water from getting down into cracks and then heaving the concrete at some point and breaking it up.
That, plus it also keeps, uh, sand and other incompressibles in there that deteriorate the joints.
In, in terms of just now taking money from your street maintenance portion of the CIP for the other budget, how much are you gonna have left after you spend this sixteen and that thirty-nine?
I've looked at it and, uh, right now we're at about a hundred thousand left in, in that pot of money. And I'm also looking at other issues at this time for, for some of that money, too.
Other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item F tonight is rental code enforcement regarding the properties owned by Darrell L. Columbach. A brief staff presentation, please.
Uh, this issue was previously discussed in closed session with the city council. Uh, what we need is a official motion from the city council to go forward with, um, the process that, um, to get them, to collect on the money judgment of approximately three hundred and nine thousand against Darrell Columbach. Previously in closed session, you gave legal counsel the direction to go forward with that. We need a, a formal motion from the city council. Motion to approve rental code enforcement.
Second.
The motion is second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item G tonight is a job description for the director of administration. A brief, uh, staff presentation, please.
At our last city council meeting, I brought forward the director of administration job description. Uh, I believe the city council asked for more, uh, information and specifics as part of the director's position. Uh, we revised the specific activities of the work performed, uh, added more detail. We also added the finance director's new job description, which we expect to, uh, be amended to. Uh, to provide an example of, of how the work is going to be shifted from one position to another. Uh, if you recall, as part of that staffing plan that was approved last year, uh, we anticipate the consolidation of the utility billing department and the finance department. And, uh, the managers of those two departments would be consolidated into the finance director's position. In an order to move forward, then, we are also creating the director of administration position to begin to oversee the finance department as well as several other departments. Um, and city, uh, contracts. Um, the administration department will take on a greater role of municipal management um, as, uh, departments begin to consolidate under the administration department. This is a follow-up to your request at our last meeting for more information.
Thank you. Questions, sir?
Well, I read this through, um, one point one. My question is, um, will this person, director of administration, hire these people? City clerk, finance director, communication specialist, human resources clerk, because that person, the director of administration, is supposed to supervise them, evaluate, and manage.
Uh, I would say that it would occur within, in consultation with the city manager, as it would now for other department positions.
Next one is on one six. Position must ensure that all applicable laws, regulations, and policies are followed by staff and city personnel. I look at this as a responsibility of city, of the city manager. And if something went wrong, uh, would, would the city manager say, well, you didn't tell us about it, and this would be the responsibility then of the director of administration?
No, ultimately, all responsibility falls onto the city manager's shoulders. Um, I routinely delegate that responsibility in some fashion to department heads and expect them to manage their staff and make sure their staff are following department policies as well as city policies. But to answer your question, uh, no, all of the responsibility ultimately falls on my, my shoulders.
Just the wording. And then one point eight, responsible for keeping the city manager informed about issues that will or could impact the job performance of the city manager.
Yes.
Um, my thought is the city manager needs to keep himself informed.
Right. I rely on others to, uh, advise and provide, uh, direction. Um, it is my responsibility to keep informed. Um, however, sometimes issues occur that I am unaware of or don't know about, and for those reasons, I rely on department heads to keep me informed as well.
But it conveys the idea that somebody else is responsible, not you.
Okay. How would you prefer it worded?
You have to convey that the person is sharing in responsibility.
All right. Shall share in responsibility for keeping city manager informed?
Yeah. Same thing in one six.
It's not so much about the impact that job performance of the city management impact the city. The issues that the city manager needs to know about. I think that's really what.
Well, we just did, uh, uh, the previous paragraph where the city manager is responsible for everything subordinates do, and this is reflecting that fact.
So it conveys that the city manager is ultimately responsible.
Yeah.
Steve? Um, first off, um, I want to thank the city manager for providing the additional information on what the, uh, finance director would be doing. And it's, uh, in providing, uh, the information on what the current positions are doing versus what the proposal is, I think if we lay them side by side, we can, uh, you know, if you overlap them, you can get a pretty good feel of what change is gonna be made. Having said that, I'd like to, there's, as Ken has some questions here. I, I had a really, a hard time tying in the, the overall seven thousand dollar increase to what the new finance director was gonna be doing and looking at these positions together. Uh, I would prefer, instead of voting on this and approving it this evening, I'd prefer that the council spend a little time looking at this in a work session. Uh, I'm not big on work sessions, but I think we could spend an hour at least and answer some of the questions as Ken proposed, and I think I could probably come up with a few other questions. So I prefer to do that than to vote on this tonight unless there's some reason that it's gotta be passed tonight. That's my opinion.
Are you making a motion? We send this to a?
I would make a motion.
To a work session?
I never, I make a motion that this, that we would table this, uh, and have a work session on it, and then it would be brought forward after the work session.
Second.
John got there barely before Barbara. A motion and a second, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Steiner?
No.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item H is a release of platted utility easements in the Plattville Industry Park. Do we have a staff, uh, explanation briefly?
Uh, to accommodate the development that we're hoping to get, which we'll discuss later this evening, um, we created a certified survey map that would combine several parcels in the industry park to provide a larger development site. Um, the consequence of that is there will be some existing utility easements that will still be located within that larger parcel, which obviously would cause difficulty locating the building, so we need to take a separate action to remove those utility easements, uh, from within that larger parcel that will be created. So we're asking the council to approve or authorize the, uh, city manager and city clerk to, uh, execute a release of platted utility easement. That gets recorded and those, uh, easements will no longer exist, and that, uh, parcel can then be built upon anywhere within that lot. So that is our request. Any questions?
I make a motion that, uh, we, uh, authorize this, uh, release of platted utility easements based on the, uh, reaching agreement on a developer's agreement for this piece of property.
Second.
The motion is second. Uh, Jan, would you repeat that again, please?
Okay.
So we have it clear.
She was authorizing the release of the platted utility easements based on the reaching an agreement of the developer.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under information and discussion items tonight, item A is the library board of trustees, uh, requesting that the, and encouraging the city council to support the pursuit of a community development block grant for the library block or other, uh, facility as may come forth. They would authorize the thirty-five thousand dollar payment for the planning services of EDP, which is a planning service. Carolyn, do you want to make any comments about that?
Uh, I'm glad you clarified. It really is just encouraging you to, to do this. However, I think there needs to be more explanation or more discussion about the actual grant. The planning grant is for twenty-five thousand dollars. There's also a grant for facilities, grant for five hundred thousand dollars, which is available from the state. The contract and the proposal reads that it's a contract between the city and Cindy Yegi, uh, from Verona. I'm not sure where we are in the development. I have not been brought to speed on that.
Cindy Tang was, uh, asked to speak tonight, she would have explained, is Cindy here? Does anybody see Cindy? She had to leave, so she unfortunately would have been, um, I think, be able to explain that probably better than anybody else. The idea is to need a planning grant to go and try for a half million dollar facilities grant, which it's believed that there's a fairly high probability we would get that. And it could be a significant portion of any kind of redevelopment of that block or, or in general, so.
I have a question about compensation, last page. Is it, uh, normal procedural, usual procedure to do it like this? It says, um, payment of the compensation fee shall be fifty percent of the fee, seventeen thousand five hundred upon signing of this contract, twenty-five percent of the fee, eight thousand seven fifty, and expenses within thirty days of signed contract. So to me, they could get seventy-five percent of the total amount, plus some expenses without necessarily doing anything or showing us anything.
I agree with you, Ken.
I, I believe that is unusual.
Much like the other library proposal, this isn't something that staff has put together. This is something that the library board is requesting. So having members of the library board speak to these issues would be, um, probably more appropriate than what we would know.
What, what if we request, uh, that staff put together a more specific type of proposal that will address these and other concerns? Because I think clearly the library board is not a grant writing board, and they're a library board, and.
So the concern is the pay structure?
Mm-hmm.
Well, to ensure that we're doing this in a way that.
It's like a performance, performance.
Yeah.
To me.
Well, why are we really doing it in the first place? That's my question. Why are, there, there is no project in the works. There is no library. They're gonna give us five hundred thousand dollars on what? An old thing that was submitted that we turned down in June of two thousand and ten on an expansion? And we're gonna provide that information to a grant writer when we don't know if this is even gonna be developed at all on the current site? And if going forward, the council has already made a decision not to expand the library, so I'm not even sure why we're doing it. I'm, I'm, I'm all for a grant, but I don't know what this five hundred thousand grant's gonna be tied into as far as what facility, where we're building it. And it's gonna come back to the council and saying, oh, we got this five hundred thousand dollars and it's a grant, now we should try to build a new library. Perhaps we, we could ask the library board to come forward with some kind of, uh, uh, an explanation or a suggestion as to what these funds will be used. I, 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 I'm not sure about the payment structure, the compensation fees. Um, I guess I'm not real clear on what the contract is. But I, I, I do like the idea of going for grants. I like the idea of getting, you know, an additional five hundred thousand to help.
Great.
But at this point, we don't have a developer to build the library, and if the council wants to go it and, and be the developer, we could do that, too. But we haven't even had that discussion at this point.
Why don't we carry this over for information for next time, and then we can see if there's anything new that they can present for us? I don't think we're ready to make a decision.
And Mike, how do you know that? That getting the five hundred thousand is, you said, um, highly probable, I believe? How do you know?
Unfortunately, Cindy's not here, and Cindy could, could speak to that more generally. She's had some conversations at the state level and, and, and there's some indication that a, like, an application like this would potentially be favorably, uh, received. Much like I think we had the CDBG grant for Second Street, similar kind of sense that, uh, under the right circumstances, that we would have a high probability of, of getting that. And, uh, when I first looked at this, I was looking at the amount of money potentially we were committing against the amount that we potentially could get. And, and John is right, we've indicated that a, a new library is not in the cards at the moment, but we also were looking at a redevelopment of the library block. And we had a developer that had actually gotten pretty far along in the process when they had to stop doing it. And the idea, as I recall, was that, uh, they would create a part of that development in which the library would be an anchor tenant and then develop the rest of the block. And we hadn't worked out all the details yet, and, and for anybody watching, please don't start any rumors because all of these things are in flux until they're actually our signed paper, papers. Uh, but that was kind of the idea, and it, and if there was a half million dollar grant that could be applied to the project, that's potentially a pretty significant chunk of the total to do something like that, so.
May I suggest that maybe I, uh, with your, uh, direction, contact the consultant and ask them to do just the first grant of this contract? I mean, uh, there's, there's nothing wrong with applying for a planning grant, but this contract encompasses much more than that. And if we break it down and just do the simple planning grant initially, uh, that might be a lot less expensive, that might give us a clear indication of where the state stands. If they don't award us a planning grant, then perhaps they're not interested in funding us. But if they give us a planning grant, then we're off to a good start at completing this contract.
I would make a motion for Larry to do that.
Well, this is under information, so.
All right.
Uh, the other thing, I mean, it would seem to me like it would be prudent to meet with the library board and see what their thoughts were.
Right.
I mean, why are we gonna go right to?
And I, and I apologize for this. Cindy, Cindy was gonna be here and had to leave, and I think we would have had many of these questions answered. She's, she's got a better understanding of this than I think most of us do, and unfortunately, we can't get that tonight, so.
Well, leave it on information discussion for next time, too.
See if we can bring it back and, under information, and see if we can find some more information about specifically some items like that. They work. Item B, under information, is a resolution allowing permit parking on streets near UW Plattville. Uh, this is more than anything else, an information item that, uh, suggests, uh, an approach we might take. And rather than come back with a, a specific vote on this, uh, what we're looking at more here is simply to instruct, if, if this is palatable to us, to, to instruct the man, city manager to come back with a contract or proposal with the university, uh, that we could then examine rather than simply voting on this the next time without actually seeing a contract or an agreement with them.
I would say that when I look at these streets, I don't have any problem with green, with some proposal that deals with Greenwood Avenue, that deals with University Plaza, and that deals with College Drive. Those are streets that we, we, uh, have a different approach to, um, winter park, whatever, alternate street parking or winter parking. But I have significant concerns about South Hickory Street and West Main Street being included in any proposal uh, for any kind of permit parking in this area.
What are those concerns?
Yeah, what?
What? Well, for instance, anybody that lives on Pr, our drive, Preston Drive, there's no parking on any, either side of the road. So when people come to visit people on that road, people park on Main Street. Um, the, uh, Olssick Center is the voting area for the people in the district that I resent, represent. Permit parking on South Hickory Street would prevent parking for people who are coming to vote. And, uh, there are people that live along this street, just like there are, uh, in the area of, um, the rest of Hickory Street and over in Division Street where there's going to be resident permit parking permits issued. I'm sus- suspecting that there are other people along these streets that would want resident permit parking instead of parking leases for somebody else, or parking permits that are university. So like I said, I have no problems with Greenwood, University Avenue, and College Drive, the parts that are, are already designated differently for winter alternate street parking. But I think, uh, there are other ways to regulate. are other ways to regulate parking on West Main and South Hickory Street than to issue permits that are paid to the university.
What other ways?
Well, we could make two hour parking.
Well, I, I think you're right about two things. Number one, we have to, at least two issues here we have to address. One is the, the voting, and I think right now, don't they put signs up to indicate this is short-term parking for voting?
Yeah, but if I bought a...
For the 52 people that vote in that district?
There's more than 52, Mike.
And the other is, if, if Preston Drive needs that, then we'd have to deal with some way of addressing that for those residents.
I personally would rather see just excluding Main Street and, and South Hickory. I think that even I, if I'm driving over to the university during the daytime, and there's an available spot on Main Street, I really would like to park there rather than having to get a permit to park on a city-owned street. And so that, that's my objection. I don't care to pay to park on the street. I'm already paying through my taxes. And the, I don't know, we're saying $20,000 of revenue will be generated for the city. I don't think that in all honesty, that sum is even enough to consider to deny people a place to park. The comments are also, it's expected that those who rely on the newly regulated parking areas will not be happy with the new permit fees. They may decide to alter their driving habits, or they may decide to park on campus or further away from campus and further into neighborhoods. Once again, we're pushing it into neighborhoods, which we are doing, and now we don't have the neighborhoods around Division and South, Southwest Road and all the other areas that we've already set a permit parking. And then it says, should the latter occur, the city will need to further evaluate the effectiveness of this permitting process. It never ends. You know, honestly, the university has a lot of staff, faculty, and students, and they are trying very, very hard, and I think are being successful in addressing the parking for the new residence hall. But it needs to go beyond that at this point. And so while I understand and would not disagree with Greenwood and College Drive, Longhorn, that's fine. I will not vote for Main Street or Hickory Street being permitted parking.
Any other comments about that?
Yes, I could vote for a, a part of Main Street, if we want to eliminate near Preston Drive. So we have one side of Main Street, and then Hickory Street between Main and Greenwood, Main and Pine, rather, is pretty well taken up by university, so that could be both sides. Then Hickory Street from Pine to Irene could be one side, because on the other side, east side, that's still some residential parking need. And then I would not recommend any parking permit setup for the part of Hickory from Irene to Southwest Road. So I, I agree with this in general, but there needs to be some places in particular that are not included. Also College Drive, on College Drive, the house number at 200 College Drive, probably wants that parking on the front. And 230, I don't know if they have parking on Main or not. So there are some houses on College Drive that should be excluded too, as far as this parking permit system. My next, my next thing is a question, and this is for Howard. What is an average length of space needed for a car to park? I know it depends upon the size of the car, but what I'm getting at is what's the number of cars that might be parked in all these streets, which I assume you haven't figured out yet.
I didn't calculate that, but an average parking stall length is, is 22 feet.
22 feet. Those are my comments.
Patricia, John, or Steve?
I agree with what Ken had said. I agree with your partially doing some of that on Main and partially on Hickory.
What period of time would the permit, these parking permits be for?
Eight to four. I think it's eight to four, isn't it?
Eight to four?
I, I think it's different. On Hickory and Main, I think you'd be talking eight to four. Internal to the university, I think you're talking overnight parking. I could be wrong about that, actually. Larry, do you remember off the top of your head if they were talking about...
It's right in the staff note, I believe. Whatever it is, it can be changed. It's just my job to bring forward ideas, and this was an idea.
It says eight to four in here.
Okay, then it was eight to four. And I, I think the concept was that after four o'clock, there may be events on campus that you didn't want to restrict parking for.
This would not cover the weekends. This would, so it'd be...
What about summertime?
So the, the whole purpose of this is to, maybe to force, I mean, who's, who is parking along Main and Hickory?
From Monday from eight to four.
At that time, I think a lot of the staff that work at, in the Ulfic building are the ones that are parking along, along a lot of this area here.
They're not parking in that parking space?
The result of is going to be, is to force people either to buy this or to move on campus.
Right.
And is that what, I mean, that, is that what we want? I think that's what we're trying to accomplish with this.
I think having an adjustment to both Main and, and in front of those parts of Hickory Street, as Ken has indicated, is something we could do. What if we suggest the city manager come back with a more detailed proposal in consultation with Ken, for instance? Steve, I don't know if you have specifics, and Barb and Eileen had some specific concerns about that.
I, I would also suggest that some consultation with St. Augustine's.
The what?
Well, that's the other one.
St. August.
Oh. Well, again, summertime, is this a year-round permit you're talking about? Because summertime, it's pretty empty over there.
I think it is what you want it to be. I can, I haven't started negotiating a contract or anything. It was an idea that I approached the university with and said, how do you guys feel about this? Would you be open to it? Should I talk to the council? They said, yeah.
What was you thinking if you approached the university, Larry? What was you thinking? I mean, I see there's no limit on the number of permits sold by the university, Steve. So to me, that just means the right to hunt for a parking place again. So, you know, it looks like a revenue stream for the university.
They want to treat it like a parking lot, so that people who are getting permits for parking lots on campus can use the permits for parking lot on the street.
That's great, but I'm a citizen of Platteville, and now I've just been deprived of that parking space.
That's obviously the, the, the other side of the coin. On Main Street, you're deprived of it now. Every issue has two sides, and whatever you guys want to, want me to come back with, I will.
I, I should know one thing about this, and that is that when we talked about this idea originally, it was estimated, and it was just an estimate, that if we did some parking at the university, especially interior to it, that we were paying for permanent parking lots for people, and we were having to maintain the roads and plow them and the whole bit, and that we could potentially generate as much as $20,000 worth of revenue, at which point the university said, as I recall, we'll give you the $20,000, we'll handle the permits, we'll take care of the citations, and we'll split the citation revenue with you, which meant the city didn't have to do anything in order to do it, which seemed to me like a pretty good deal. I don't know about the rest of people here, but that was what originally kind of drove this. We wouldn't have to do anything. We wouldn't bear any costs. We would just generate that revenue and maybe some additional revenue. So exactly where we do the parking or not, that's certainly where something we're going to have to negotiate here until we've come up with an answer that, that works for us.
I, I mean, I don't see that eight o'clock in the morning till four o'clock in the afternoon, and there's going to be that many citizens of Platteville that are going to be driving over here and parking along here anyway, because it's already filled with staff parking there and students parking there from 7:30 on.
Well, a couple of things.
I mean, I drive over there all the time. There's no spots there.
Well, a couple of things. First of all, you're assuming, I guess, that none of the people who park there are citizens of Platteville. Are students citizens of Platteville? I would argue they are. I'm sure some staff are citizens of Platteville. I'm sure faculty are citizens of Platteville. So they're already paying for this street. I do think the university needs to address this problem, and I don't think that you address the problem by constantly taking away parking or making parking only available by permit, and that's what we're talking about doing here. And I do think you just push it further into the neighborhood. It's fine to say that, you know, there is less cars on campus, but if you go on Marquee Avenue, it's packed. I think people have moved from College Drive to Marquee Avenue. I don't think we're solving the problem by doing permit parking. If the, if the university has an event and they want people to be able to park, I guess they have to then make sure that those people get a permit before they park. I'm, I'm not sure how that would be addressed. It just seems, it seems to me...
They just allow parking for free on, on the lots there. We just had this whole, didn't we just like an hour ago, have a whole conversation about that we're going to have to start talking about paying for parking? Now you're saying, well, we don't want to pay for parking anywhere in the city.
I'm not saying...
You can have it both ways.
I'm not saying don't pay for parking. I'm saying that there has to be a certain amount of parking available for that person who does not have the option or need to buy a permit to park there on a daily basis.
Meters. I, I want to know one thing, too, is, is that there is this view that there's only one way to solve parking, and that's pour asphalt or provide parking spots. And there are many other ways to deal with parking. We're already seeing that happen at the university. We've seen decline in usage just because of changes in the permit structure. The university's going to promote students not bringing cars, which will save over a four-year period of time, one entire year's worth of, of education. They are going to have a shuttle in town here. You can deal with parking by demand. You don't have to always pour asphalt. And I will tell you this, I teach in the renewable energy program at school. The council's heard this, I believe 100% that 10 years from now, you will not see as many cars in this town as you do now, and we'll be staring at a bunch of asphalt with weeds growing out of the cracks, and we're going to wish we hadn't poured it, and we're going to wish we hadn't built these massive parking structures. That's my belief, and it's why I'm moving us, or when I try to do this, I'm thinking about moving us toward something that doesn't commit us to permanent infrastructure. There's more than one way to solve the parking problem. You don't have to keep putting out parking spots to do it. And it's just, I find that very short-sighted.
Just to be clear, I'm not asking the city to build, in this instance, parking on campus.
Deal with this in a lot of ways. You don't always have to build parking lots. You don't always have to provide parking. There's other ways. And a lot of it's greener, and a lot is more sustainable, and 10 years from now, we're going to be wishing we'd done it.
I'm in favor of permeable pavers, pavers, if that's an option. That'd be good.
Well, the, the ones that the water goes through? Yeah, I like those two. One agreement there. Anything else about this?
So I, as a, as a citizen, if I need to go over to the university, I have to go buy a permit somewhere.
I gotta believe the university would be interested in providing some mechanism for citizens who need to go there to go there. I can't believe they're not going to have meters or something. I mean, it just flies in the face of common sense that they would just exclude the public. Can't buy a permit, you can't go over there.
We can mark some of it visitor parking.
Yeah. We've got it, we've got visitor parking over by, internal to the university on University Plaza and in some of the lots there. Get a visitor permit. It's not that hard to do.
But you do have to get a permit, Patrice. That would be correct.
When I went to the bookstore, and I pulled up, and I bought a quarter in the meter, and I went in, and I bought it, and came out.
Right. There's, there's, there's parking, there's parking meters over there already.
And I used it, and I had a parking spot. I played a quarter, went in and bought it, and came out of the bookstore. So there's...
You're suggesting parking meters.
No, I'm saying, they did provide parking.
Let, let me suggest that we ask Larry to work with the university for more specific agreement. Barb has some specific questions about some issues that we need to address in there. Ken has some suggestions, some other things here, and let's ask people to relay those to Larry so he can bring those to the university and see if he can come back with something that's close to what I agree with.
So you, you want an amended staff note, not a full agreement? Because in agreement, I'd engage the city attorney to start helping draft language. We still have an outstanding issue about university enforcement. We're tracking that down with university legal staff. I, I guess I'm, I, do you just want a revised staff note that says what an alternative proposal would look like?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's do that for now and see if we can at least come closer to some...
Could you clarify for me again which part of Main Street you wanted excluded? I missed that comment.
Well, let, let me ask that, that each council member who's got these concerns meet with you so they can relay that. I don't know if we, I suspect Barb would want to look and think about it a minute before we ask her to come up with an answer right now. The same thing with Ken, is he probably wants to go back and look at it a little bit, have a chance to do that, and, and Eileen too, so.
I do have a question.
Work session.
What was the basis for the $20,000?
Well, when I approached the university, I said that the city council had talked previously about permitting parking around the campus, and in fact, had budgeted $20,000 as a revenue source from that permitted parking. This had come about through several discussions we had last year when we were looking at the new residence hall, when we were looking at campus traffic maps and, and planning. And they said, well, why don't we just work out a deal where the $20,000 is given to you the first year, and then after the first year, we'll get more specific about what exact dollar amounts should be negotiated.
Exact numbers of spots.
Yeah, because they don't know how many they're going to sell. I mean, it, it's unlimited, but they don't know how many permits they're going to sell, or, or how much revenue will result us from, from this parking. So I...
That's why I was asking Howard about the length of the parking space.
Yeah.
Anything else? Want to take a five-minute break while we prepare for Emmy Roth's presentation? Let's do that. Let's take a five-minute break, and we'll come back on camera and finish up with the Emmy Roth, while we're working with discussions. We're gone for five minutes, if you're still watching at home. We're going to be gone for five...